All right, good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners. Commissioners check in for Monday, July 29, 2024. It's 2:04 PM. My name is Ty Mansur, Chair of the Board, Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Caroline Mejia, Commissioner Emily Klaus, and Commissioner Gary Edwards on Zoom. For public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. Also joined by County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Managers Rodham Campbell and Rob Gilbert. We have our standing report on external boards and then some commissioner items. So let's start with external boards and start with Commissioner Edwards, if you can hear us.
No, I'm gonna bypass that.
Very good. Commissioner Klaus?
I don't have any.
Commissioner Fornier, any reports?
I gotta look at my calendar.
You got it.
I did attend the LSC meeting for consideration of legal action regarding the DCYF situation. And it was recommended through that to that WASAC file lawsuit against DCYF to, I guess, an injunction, I think is the word, an injunction against their order to not allow the youth offenders to go into the juvenile system. So that is in the works. I attended the Risk Pool Conference at Little Creek Casino. And there's a lot of stuff that I'm learning about. I'm not even pretend that I can give some kind of, you know, spiel on what we talked about. I know, of course, insurance rates go up. It's going up less than was anticipated, but you can look forward to a conversation from Brian at an upcoming meeting regarding that. And those were really the two things. I was out of town for the Hoot and Nanny. I don't know. I can't wait to hear about your hippity-hop.
I wasn't gonna report on that.
Too late. We wanna hear about the hippity-hop race.
All right. Commissioner Fornier?
Yeah. Attended the LSC meeting, same as Commissioner Fornier's alternate. And then the Board of Directors meeting is tomorrow, so probably the same action will happen at the Board of Directors meeting. Attended the County Road Administration Board, and it was hosted in Port Angeles. And we had Callum County come and present, as well as Nohomish County and Island County. And so it was just interesting to see kind of what those counties are doing in terms of their county roads and how they're funding them. Went and saw a couple of projects in Callum County. I guess one thing to report is that the County Road Administration Board is still working with Assotin County. Last time, they are really struggling with getting in a county engineer. And they did not file their reports on a timely basis, based on when they're at. Basically, if they don't get everything in order, all of the counties have, could lose federal funding, even the state. So we're actively trying to work with Assotin County to be sure that they have everything they need. And they're really working hard to try to get everything measured up. But they've really had a hard time with staffing, and so...
So all the kids have to stay in from recess if one kid...
Yeah, yeah. And so...
That's weird.
And so Assotin...
Like a state law or something?
Well, no. Assotin, it's like, I think it's just based on how the projects that they have that have some federal and state measures. Assotin? Thank you. Assotin. And it's just very funky.
I feel like it's ringing a bell, what you're saying.
Yeah. But then attended the New Voter Service Center Open House. And just again, congratulations Auditor Hall. And then also a big shout out to our staff. I'll give a shout out to Tony. The center looks really nice. And, you know, just seeing kind of before and afters, it's really incredible what they've been able to do. And kind of excited that it's happening right before the big primary. And you can get a practice run out of that before the general elections. Also attended the Regional Housing Council with Commissioner Klaus. And there was a lot of conversations about the retreat and as well as a different initiatives that I think staff are going to present to the board later on. Other than that, that is my report.
All right, thank you. For me, I don't really have anything to report. I attended the City Recovery Council meeting on Thursday, the SENSIE Guide Line Commission Multiplier Subcommittee on Thursday, the Clean Energy Property Tax Impact Task Force, or CEPTI Tax Force, meeting one. Most of it, I missed the tail end, but there's another one tomorrow, which I won't be able to make because it's during our agenda setting. So hopefully, we can track that through my assistant, and then we'll have a report out later. The EDC Hoot and Nanny was a good event as usual. I did not do well in the hippity-hop being raised, but I didn't fall over, which I felt like was an accomplishment. And I stayed upright. So that was my goal, accomplish that goal, keep it modest.
And Mayor Pinto took the trophy home.
He was just, yeah, he just went charging out of the gate. This time he stayed upright. So that was good. That was it. Okay, so let's go on to our commissioner items then. First up is an executive session pursuant to 4231-101I to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions or discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency governing body or member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. Emergency rental assistance ERA-1 funds is the topic approximately 15 minutes.
Yes.
Is slated. Commissioner's action may follow. It's 2:11 PM, so we'll be in executive session now until 2:26, and extended if necessary. Okay, we're back. It's 2:28 PM. We have completed the executive session from the agenda, and there's no formal legislative action by the board. And so we're gonna move on to the next bullet item under subsection two, which is Letter of Support for Rural Transit. Okay, so Commissioner.
You all should have a copy. This is a, we're asking for the commission members to sign on to a letter of support for TRPC for funding for rural transit. I'm sure that you're all familiar with it, but it's the Public Transportation System in South Thurston County. Serves Tumwater, Tenine, Orenia, Rochester, Bucodan, the Confederated Tribes, as well as Yelm, and it is run through TRPC.
So is this a situation that they need to get, like their funding re-upped?
Every, yeah, every few years they have to go back.
It's just like a maintenance level request? And I saw that there was an attachment of a previous letter. We'd sent similar, so...
Yeah.
Okay, any questions from the board? No, thumbs up on that. Thumbs up from Commissioner Edwards. Okay, easy enough. All right. Next up is Medical Equipment Bank Funding Allocation.
Commissioner, the Medical Bank put a request in a while back. They sent an email probably about four weeks ago. And then talking with the team, it looks like we, that was the 170 that the requesting was included in the non-departmental budget in the past. And so we're just wanting to regroup and make sure that everyone remembered that you budgeted that 170. That's what the budget team is telling us is allocated for them so that we can get working with them on issuing those dollars out.
That's great, but when can we start?
That's great, but can we start? Yeah.
The only thing, the only caveat is that the team is checking, and I don't know that, it sounds like this wasn't vetted the first time the request was made, and to the budget, just a gift of public funds question that we have to round up with our team.
Can someone from our executive team get in touch with them and let them know that we're working through these?
I've emailed Joyce twice. I don't know if she's getting my email. Asked her, asked her the last email I sent late last week, just to respond if she's getting it. That was the email that she, that was originally sent over. So I don't have her contact or her phone number.
She gave us a call, so.
Recently?
Uh, when.
Okay, yeah, so I sent something late last week.
Okay.
But if you can send me her, her contact number, I'll reach out to her via phone. Just make sure she's getting her emails.
Yeah.
We budgeted it from what source? I didn't catch that.
It's coming out of the general fund, out of non-departmental. But it is general fund, and the board approved that as part of the last budget amendment.
So if we touch base with our legal team and make sure that it's not a gift to public funds, we can go ahead and proceed with fulfilling that request.
I don't quite remember it.
I know, does anyone, I don't either, frankly.
I don't remember it, but, oh, okay.
I remember putting it on the table and wanting it to be in the discussion at the appropriate moment. I just don't quite remember the decision point.
I thought honest, not to stir.
See, that's why, because none of, when that request came through, since none of you said, "Oh yeah, that's already been funded, Leonard," that's why we're pausing here, because we're.
I remember it, we were like, does it qualify for ARPA? I think is what the discussion was, if I'm remembering it correctly. I don't rem, I think what we said is, if it qualifies for ARPA, I think let's go ahead with it, because every, I'm just kind of surprised it's general fund, because the board has been so hesitant.
I was surprised to find it too, if I may.
Yeah, please.
When Leonard first reached out, I was going, no, we, we didn't. And then I was looking at the budget for something else, and I spotted that. And it was like, oh, we, we must have done that. So we're, we're ensuring that it's all in there correctly as approved by the board. It looks like it is. That was a busy day, I will say. And, and, but it, it would not qualify for ARPA.
Yeah, I even probably was like, oh, I did some research and I'm.
Yeah, oh hey, I found this.
This is odd. So then, my perspective is, since it wasn't on anyone's radar, we're circling up with you to make sure that's what collective remembrance was, so that we can move forward.
I want to ask Commissioner Edwards, because he's both, I know, a, a big advocate of this project, but also a big protector of the general fund, and I'm just wondering if he remembers how this went down.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking that Commissioner Mejia got it right, that when we all agreed to this, we all agreed to the need, and that it was going to come out of ARPA funds. I think that's the way I remember.
Yeah, and we can, we're getting the, the response right now that doesn't qualify for ARPA. We are happy to double-check that if we need to, but ARPA requirements are a pretty high bar. So we can do, we can run the traps, ARPA and I can bring this back around once we can say definitively it doesn't qualify, if that's what the commissioners would like us to do.
And what was the, what was the substance of the communication you sent out, you said last Friday?
Oh, it just said, thanks so much for reaching out. There, there was a second email I sent. First one was, so this one was, thanks so much. I don't know if you got my last email, but wanted to let you know that we are discussing this internally, and we, and we'll be able to make a determination soon and get back to you.
Yeah, I just don't think in light of what we went through, we were, we would have been, it felt like we had the latitude to make that allocation just out of straight general fund.
Okay, so let, let me meet with the budget team. We'll circle up and then make sure that it doesn't qualify for ARPA. And then if, if we need to get direction from the board again, we'll, we'll be back soon.
I think I have my budget notes too still, so I'm happy to look through those as well.
Allows us all to go back. Like Robin's saying, she was, did some research and surprised that that's what the notes showed.
And then, of course, gift of public funds too, we need to know that answer as well.
Say that again, I'm sorry, sir?
The gift of public funds issue would also potentially.
Yeah, we'll run that to ground too.
Okay, well then more to come on that item. Next up is BOCC courthouse campus subcommittee extension.
So we did not meet Friday. We had, we were at a point where we're waiting for some further research, and we pushed the meeting out to this Friday. And we had just had an initial setup of a, of like a four-week period for the ad hoc committee. And so we are asking that, that four weeks be extended out another two weeks.
Yes.
So we would.
So moved. Let's make it four, just to make sure that you guys have the time you need.
Second.
Motion in second to extend by four weeks the subcommittee's existence. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay, four to one, that motion passes.
Okay.
Okay. Write that down. Okay, other commissioner items is the last item.
I have one.
Commissioner Mejia, go ahead.
So in our regular agenda setting, every Tuesday, we have a PIO check-in. And as we're going through it, right, it's, and like, what's reported on it? And it's like, what's the usefulness for the board to have those PIO check-ins? Like, besides getting a staffing update? And so I guess my recommendation would be to have an internal work group with Leonard and our commissioners aides, and kind of determining what our communication priorities are. And, you know, taking advantage of that investment that the board has made with the additional staffing, as well as the additional equipment we had to buy, and kind of having that, that focus and that information be there, right? Like, and then it can come in front of the board in a more concise manner, rather than having this weekly PIO check-in where it's nothing to report, or this is a staffing update, or nothing to report. So, or there's a reminder, there's, you know, the Friday five that's going out. So I think, you know, having at that level with our, I think all of our aides know what our priorities are, in terms of communications and kind of what we would want to see. So having that, that at that level.
Is that a motion?
I will move it.
I would second that.
And I think the, when I first came, chatted to Megan about the commissioner check-in. She said that really was valuable during COVID, when every week there was new communication components coming out. And she mentioned to me, and I, she's not here today, but, I don't want to speak for her, but she said sometimes she doesn't have much to report out. So I don't think she would, she would be, it would be missing to take that off. Commissioner, to your comment, getting, us getting strategy on looking out a couple of weeks, a couple of months on what we're going to be prioritizing. And the communications team does some really great work. So that might be a good strategy for us to bring that in, and then we can report out on, on some of those activities.
Sounds fun. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor of this motion? Let me restate the motion. Motion is to eliminate the PIO check-in standing item on the Tuesday morning agendas, and have county manager and communication, and executive aides meet on a periodic basis to discuss communication priorities. Does that sound accurate to your motion, Commissioner Mejia?
Yes.
Okay, so with that statement of the motion and no further discussion, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay. So that takes care of that one. Other commissioner items? I do not. Commissioner Edwards, anything from you?
Uh, no, sir, you covered, thank you.
Okay. Motion's adjourned. Be back, we got a busy Tuesday morning, because we have two back-to-back board meetings in the next two weeks. So we're back to our old way of reviewing two agendas. So it'll be a busy Tuesday. See you Friday, tomorrow.
Thank you.